Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. Let's just pretend you're just here in the audience, okay? I'm here for special things.
All right.
May I have the role of reporter Paul?
Jeremy Alberts.
Here.
Cooper.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Holly.
Here.
Nellie.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
I'm here.
Paul and Aaron.
Here.
Professor Fessa.
Present.
Robinson.
Okay, well, we'll be into the written admissions.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Now, would you like to explain to us what our admissions are about tonight?
The Connecticut Association Boys of Education has formed a long-standing position in Connecticut. They organize 169 towns. They've developed an award based on leadership. And they thought that it was very important for students within each district that meet the criteria of leadership to be recognized. It is many times, if you look good on your visa as you go into a college application, but it's truly an honor to be here this evening. We're very pleased to have you here. Many of you are in honor society, using a lot of clubs. You just do some yeoman work for us, and this is a way for us to recognize you. The board is an exceptional reminder to them to do this. So, thank you for being here. The way we're gonna have this work this evening, we're gonna call the administrator up. They will read your name and then talk to you about you. We will start with Mr. Ross.
Ross, please tell a nice little story about your campus.
It's an honor for me to be here and to introduce these two fine students. I had the pleasure of interviewing and talking to them, and you couldn't find two fine young people. If you could do it right there. Smile for the cameras. First, I'd like to introduce Caitlin Van Trucker. Caitlin has excelled academically. She enjoys sports, playing softball with the Danbury Crest Travel Team and basketball with Powell. She received numerous awards at school, including the principal's award in seventh grade for assisting in the Veterans Day program that was put on annually. I was so impressed with her volunteerism, and that's seemingly something that's not in style these days. And so when kids are able to get out and do something in the community, it kind of brings back the stories of my faith and my hope in the future. She participated in the Kindness Week at Rogers Park, helped pack rice and beans for our packed boot bag at Hillside Pantry, participated in Vince Bell's program, made parts for Veterans Day, and she did some work at her church, St. Gregory's Parish. Additionally, she participated in the theater program and the religious education program with the Girl Scouts. She took a trip, we take a trip annually to global endeavors close down to Florida, and it's really a growth experience for kids. When they come back from there, they're truly different people. And she commented about the altruism that she learned, about giving back. And she said she learned that it's the journey, not the destination. And so I present to you Miss Caitlin Van Trucker. Would you like the parents to join us?
We're about to say to the board, are you parent?
Yeah. Would her parents please stand?
We'd like to acknowledge you also. Thank you very much.
Next, let's give a brief Matthew Henry. Matthew, too, has excelled academically. He enjoys baseball, and even more so, he enjoys his clarinet. And he looks forward to getting at Danbury, getting to Danbury High School and furthering his ability playing his clarinet. Don't misunderstand me, he's got it here, too. He can do it there, too. He volunteers at the nursing home, assists with patients, helps set up and run carnivals twice annually. He is involved in the school's jazz band, CTEP, and he was involved in the production of a play in his religious education class. Matthew wants to be a doctor or surgeon, and he wants to do something special, as I said, with his clarinet when he gets up to Danbury High School. I just want to mention that Caitlin wants to be a history teacher, and we need her very badly, so I'd like to introduce Mr. Matthew Henry.
Belle Tracy's here, Belle.
It's my pleasure to be here to introduce you to two wonderful young people. They have participated in a lot of different things. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about them one at a time. Abby Gilgumbray. Abby is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. She maintains excellent grades. She has participated in musical theater productions at Rogers Park. If you were lucky enough to come and see Beauty and the Beast, she was in the air and did a great job. Outside of school, Abby's involved in Girl Scouts, tap dance, piano, basketball, and soccer, which is a nice wide range of activities for her to be involved in. Her ambition is to be a social worker, and she enjoys working with and helping people. So I'd like to introduce Abby Gilgumbray.
This is Jose Mendez. Jose is vice president of the student council. He has helped organize various school events, and he dances. We recently had a dodgeball tournament, and he's helped organize that. Jose has earned privilege of being an office worker, and he happens to be in my office, and he's truly one of the most enlightened, well-known people I've ever met. I've enjoyed having him in the office. Jose works hard to maintain good grades in all of his classes. He is a member of the police explorers, which entails many community service activities. Jose looks forward to a service career such as police officer or doctor, which is a wide range of opportunities.
Let's like introduce Jose Mendez. Belle, the parents here?
Yes.
Could you come on up and take the pictures? You get applause, too, guys. You get the applause. Okay. Next, we have Westside, that is, Lord. That's the time in the school is the same, there, and it's this Augustin.
Augustin.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
So why don't you do me a favor? Would everybody just give us your name in there? Come here.
I'm Hillary Singer. I'm the eighth staff math teacher.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Agustin. I am the eighth staff photo science teacher.
Good evening. I'm Curtis Dara. I am the school counselor for eighth staff.
And we're all millennials. We're all gonna use our phones. So I'm gonna be introducing Rashmi today. So Rashmi is currently in the National Junior Honor Society. They do many community service projects. One in particular, they did a book drive at Mill Ridge. They introduced and brought Vince Bell to our school this year at Westside. She's also in the yearbook committee, and she's a very avid piano player outside of school. She's very talented in many fields and not just academics. In her grades this year, she's reached high honors in both of the trimesters, and I'd say is gonna get it in this third trimester as well. Let's see. She was one of the members of our robotics team that we started this year at Westside. We had two options, science fair or robotics, and she was one who dove right in and was eager to join in that. They competed. When was that? Was it competition? You remember, February or March? Sometime when it was cold out. And we actually did really well. We got, what, fourteenth out of ninth out of twenty? Excellent for the first act, though. She's a straight A student. She's extremely hardworking. She's a pleasure to have in the classroom, and we look forward to having her every single day. And truly, this is there for everyone and not just there for herself. So I'd like to congratulate Rashmi.
Hello. So Rashmi has been saying she's a phenomenal student, so I enjoy having her. We just invited her to come. I brought on Sodare to my, Brady's, because Brady. So Brady is one of the kindest, hardworking students I've ever had. He is the first person to help a student out, as well as the first person to hand in his assignment, while still doing gymnastics Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays for two and a half hours. So I think that's pretty impressive. He is a multitasker. He gets things done. He has always a positive energy. You can say hello to him in the hallway, and he will say hello back every single time. His character is amazing. His grades are amazing, and his after-school commitments, church, jazz band, everything that he does is phenomenal. And I think he knows that he's awesome, and if he doesn't, I think you're awesome. So, and then Mr. Dara.
So I'm gonna also add to Brady. When I first came to Westside, because I'm new to the district this year, I saw Brady in the hallway, and I was like, who are you and what is your name? Because that is a smile that can change the world. And I always told all my kids, like, at the end of every leadership class that I teach, one, two, three, you can change the world. And I really see that in Brady, and I can't wait to see how far he goes in life, and especially since in Danbury High School, my musical school. And I always tell him, you better come visit me and tell me all the exciting things you're doing. Brady also plays two in the school jazz band. He's auditioned in order to see Western Connecticut Youth Orchestra. He successfully auditioned and got into the middle school Western Regional Band. Besides being skilled in musical instrument, he can really sing really well. He's an active member in the peer mediation club that I started this year at Westside, which was a curriculum given to me by Dr. Paula Preisen, that she started abroad when she was there. It was like a four-month training, basically learning how to learn more about yourself and learn how to excel your peers and taking care of those situations when in need before they go to discipline, to administration. He's an active member of church and saints in the church's choir. He sang in the role of Amal in Westcon's Amal and the Night visitors opera, and in his spare time, Brady likes to perform for people who can't make it to his concerts. And for the past four years, Brady has slummed and played in the tuba for various concerts at Riverwoods, continuing care of the special community in Exeter, in Hampshire. I am beyond proud to announce Brady has won this award.
It's time for the, let me see if I can like her back.
It can change the world.
Use the whistle.
Okay, next is the alternative center. Who's here for me a second? I wore a cape. I think my glasses are gonna be a little.
He's sending us the picture, otherwise I'm giving you my phone, so I can make sure you don't have it.
So, so I promised that. Oh, yeah. Hi. So I'm Laura Blake, one of the staff members at the alternative center for excellence. And I promised that I would talk fast, and they know I do talk fast, so I'll get it all out. But I would like to take tonight a little bit of time to recognize each of these young people that are before us. Anyone who knows anything about our program, our school, knows that students who come to ACE have tried out at the high school usually and have had some issues or some things that have gotten in their way, different reasons. Everybody comes there for different reasons, but students who participate with us, we're a very small program. We get to know each other very well, and we become like a family, and that's what you hear a lot about ACE, we're a family. And so I'm very proud to honor a son and a daughter of ACE tonight. The first person I'd like to talk about is Jonathan McKenzie, who is right behind me. Jonathan has done an excellent job of creating an academic career for himself through some pretty big hardships, things that he's had to deal with, but he has maintained an excellent grade point average. He has, I believe, your acceptance to Nagatuck right now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, he has an acceptance to Nagatuck for the fall. He's maintained a great grade point average. He's been able to keep his grades up, on top of which, he and another student helped start an organization after school to make sure that all seniors stay up, which meant that they were helping to tutor other seniors to make sure that their averages stayed up so that they would all graduate as one group together. On top of which, if you ever recognize Jonathan, it might be because he also works full-time while taking care of himself and living independently. So he works a full-time job, maintains excellent grades, and is graduating with an acceptance letter to college. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize that. For any young man, the daughter of ACE that I would like to recognize is Shanisha Watson-Damsy, who is standing behind me, and somebody I'm pretty proud of. She's been a part of my group at ACE since she started. Another recognition for somebody who went through regular high school and didn't exactly fit, who came to our school not quite sure what she was going to do, but always sure that she wanted to try things and change. And in the environment of ACE, she's been able to do that. Not only can I recognize her for constantly upping her average every semester she's been at ACE and striving to make sure that that average stays high, actually, we were getting into arguments about trying to get an A average in environmental, in green chemistry this semester. She's been arguing with the professor about who's gonna get the higher A. On top of which, both Jonathan and Shanisha have been involved in community service projects. Today after school, we were actually baking. Part of what ACE has done this year has become involved with Henry Abbott's Taft exam and after-school program in culinary and CNA. Shanisha has become part of that CNA program. She has been there since it started. She will be finishing with experience in the CNA program and hopefully will get involved in taking the CNA exam this summer. She is also, she also has her acceptance letter to Nagatuck Valley. She also has been involved in volunteer programs. I started to say that today they started a program with Henry Abbott Tech. And after school, as I left today, they were wrapping cookies that were gonna be brought to the shelter later on today. This weekend, both of these young people, in the rain, with all of us, did the cleanup Danbury project around the school and Westcon, and also beautified our campus so that when I left, it was raining and they were still packing flowers. So because we're a small school, our seniors participate in a lot of things, and it would be hard for me to recognize all the things they've participated in, but just about every project we've done, these two people have been involved. Shanisha is a person that people go to when they need somebody to head up a project because she's somebody that so many students respect and admire, that when we actually get together for a group gathering, they tend to chant her name and try to get her in front of the group to get them to calm down. She's actually that kind of a leader. I'd like to take a moment to recognize her, how far she's come, and also tell her how crazy I'm gonna miss you, but you're gonna come back and you're gonna tell me everything you do, right? If we could get parents, if we get parents up?
I need parents. Come on. Smile, everybody. Okay, here we are, with our small school, the last high school in the state of Connecticut. And it's our premier school, and we, we have Mr. Jonathan here, who's going to talk about these students.
Are you ever wondering what these youngsters look like when they're seniors?
Please use the mic, sir. Is anyone wondering what the middle school people look like when they're seniors? This is it. Here they are, two of our best seniors getting ready to go. I have with me Sofia Pampilio and Raul Malata, right there. Right there, right? Thank you. Thank you. So, this way. Sofia worked in my office for the past two years, so I got to know her very well. Most of the times she was there one period when she had left. Sometimes she was there two periods when she got the car taken away and had to take the bus to school. I'm not gonna tell that story. Involved in DHS, Sofia was involved in athletics in the beginning, starting with field hockey, where she was named captain of the field hockey team. Also involved as a BOG executive council member her junior year, and actually BOG president her senior year. So this is our board of governors' president standing right here. In the community, she was involved in our DECO program that played an instrumental role in influencing 376,000 people with regards to distracting dronies and also call or celebrate my dronie contest. In DECA, she placed third this year in the state of Connecticut with her project, and in the top 20 percent nationally. Bush, in Connecticut, in top 20 nationally, also spending time raising money and awareness for Hand's Place. In college, she'll be attending Arizona State University. In the fall, doubling major in business communication and business management. Sofia. Raul's graduated with a 4.67 GPA. Here's a list of a few of the accomplishments, because we could take a lot. First off, president of the National Honor Society, president of the National Math Honor Society, president of the math team, a captain of the chess team, class valedictorian, and also received a perfect score on the essay test. Amazingly, doing all that, doing all that while heavily involved in our robotics team, mentioned before, where he was the lead programmer and placed 16th in the world championships in Kentucky. Outside of school, he's an all-state orchestra for the violin, associate director of the Danbury Community Orchestra, and plays first violin in the Danbury Symphony Orchestra. Associate concertmaster. I don't, okay, sorry. Along with that, last, the world, something interesting that just came up. He'll be traveling to Washington, DC, coming up in two weeks or so, three weeks, is that a magic?
Saturday.
Is that right? The Atlantic magazine puts out a contest for an essay worldwide, and out of all of the entries worldwide, he is one of the top three finalists. He will be traveling down to Washington, DC along with his parents, and I believe Mr. Portelli's going with you, to find out if he is the actual finalist for that. So that's his accomplishment. Last year, there were, what was the number, Mr. Caccio said? Something like 8,000 entries worldwide. Last year's winner came from a private school in Australia, so that probably be palaver of the student going up. Next year in the fall, Raul will be attending UC Berkeley all the way out to California, and he's gonna do a great job out there. Raul, please.
Well, thank you, and I'm not easily impressed, but I am impressed by the young people. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say you're welcome? Would you like to leave? Be my guest?
Yes, you don't have to say. We'll be signed up, so I'm gonna run by anyone in any of those that want to. Now she can not be put back here.
So the Board of Education approved the items in the consent calendar. It's 16-70 through 16-75 as recommended.
Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Any questions? Any comments? I would like to thank the following people. I must have. Ms. Agnes, also here, Ms. Dennis. Probably about thirty years old. In Washington, twenty-seven years. I'm new to the academy here for twenty-eight years. And Patricia Staley for seventeen years. Thank you very much. I also would like to thank U C, other state systems, community and charitable funds committee, and fully turn back on time for very much to the German hospital effects. Thank you. That's how we get these numbers. All right, all in favor of accepting the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Stay no. Passes. On the agenda, we have a recommendation by part of the school, fifty-fourth year, January of the 18th. Is there any questions that have to be defined? Okay. CMN, okay. And then revisions to the policy on medications. So I hope that everybody read those. Again, if there's any questions, this guy is here.
You can bring all the changes, please.
Yes, there's some minor changes to the policy in defining school personnel, who will now be able, other's personnel will now be delegated to administer Prilrobin injection, which is an medication that reduces the severity of blood sugar for people with diabetes. Staff will be able to delegate, will be able to delegate the administration of Diastat, which is for students who have seizure disorders. And there will be delegation for, unless it's personnel, to administer FNF and Viper to any student who has their first time allergic reaction in the school. All of this only announces a school risk. We will be able to delegate for field trips, Diastat and Prilrobin. The FNF will only be applied during school hours, not everything else.
Thank you. So any questions?
This will be out for two weeks and I'll come back at the next meeting to be included in information next year.
Thanks. Thanks, David. Our employee representative, the middle school, you're the one who had to tell us. You introduce yourselves and then come change your presentation.
Hi, good evening. I'm Pat Stevens, I'm at World Congress, she's at Rogers Park. Myself, my colleagues, Adrian, so I just kind of give you a few highlights for Rogers Park. It's really kind of difficult when you sit back and think, gosh, what did we do all year? And then you start thinking about it and there's lots of things we did this year. And I think when Adrian and Charlie are putting our thoughts together, some of the key words that kept coming up to us were cooperating with the team. And I think it's a whole lot, we'll see how long that will come back. Charlie's gonna end up with a quick little video for you, but just to touch on a few things. I hope that you were, some of you were in the MAC and see our production of the communities this year was spectacular. And it was, again, a wonderful, powerful effort on part of the cast, the crew, the staff, the parents, and the students. And it was just a whole lot of fun and just a great production. Along with that, our special ed department is currently working on their annual being by theater production. This year, speaking is Be the Change, and that production is going to take place on the turn for the Met. You've had the opportunity to see that before, you know, it's just an amazing performance by a very wide spectrum of students. And they've been working on building their social skills, their communicative skills, and it's really been an exciting year for them. I know that maybe you're familiar with our garden project that we have out in the property. And this year, we're also taking, we're having a cooperative program between a science department, a health department, and also our language. Where we're going to be, students are going to be learning everything, organized from seeds, they're gonna be doing the sisters' plants, they work together, they're gonna learn about healthy eating habits, and we're also gonna be incorporating culturally-based recipes to go in with the cooking that we're gonna be doing from the crops that we pull out of the garden at the end of the year. The food festival that will come out of this is going to be part of next year's cultural celebration, which Charlie's gonna show us later on in the video. And we're starting this year with sixth graders and sixth graders involved and hopefully bringing them all the way up through their eighth grade experience. Also, we're gonna try opening a section of garden to the community and having it be Danbury Community Garden, focusing on organic gardening as we continue on the program. Also, another piece that we have in the garden is a sun wheel that is now visible via satellite on Google Maps.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Solis, I teach social studies in eighth grade at Rogers Park. I'm gonna add on to the wonderful things we've been doing at Rogers Park. The first being, we are hosting a Rogers Park social site department is putting together a museum night on May 19, Thursday from five to seven, to showcase sixth, seventh, and eighth grade projects that we've been working under project-based learning, which is basically putting together, where the kids are really putting together the project on their own. It's a form of inquiry-based. And the sixth graders are doing civilizations, seventh grader's doing the Civil War, and the eighth graders are doing World War II. So that's May 19, that's a Thursday, and Friday 7, if anyone's interested, at Rogers Park. Our math department also hosted two successful family nights. One was high night and another was family math night. High night was March 14 with hundreds of students from all three middle schools that went to Rogers Park to participate in games, contests, and activities dealing with pi. And the family math night involved over a hundred students and families getting together to discuss something about math. Our guidance department put together an amazing career fair. We had over forty-two presenters from all types of careers, including Mayor Mountain. Seventh and eighth graders enjoyed the experience, even about any type of potential career options that they have. The National Junior Honor Society raised close to $1,000 for various causes, Dawes, Make-A-Wish Foundation, and students combined for several hundred hours of community service in Danbury. And the physical ed department, along with volunteer teachers, have organized a variety of sports tournaments for our students. We have done a volleyball tournament, basketball tournament, dodgeball tournament, and we've actually today and tomorrow is our soccer tournament. That's why I pardon my appearance, but I just came from that. And that, our soccer tournament, actually, our winners of our little tournament go against the winners of Broadview's tournament, and we have a Broadview versus Rogers Park game on May 24 at Broadview. If anyone's interested to attend that, that is at three o'clock. Finally, our governance council at Rogers Park is holding a beautification day for our school. That is June 4th, a Saturday at 9:00 AM. We will have teachers, students, parents, and community members all volunteering their time to try to make our school a little more beautiful than it is. And Charlie is now going to discuss a little bit of these.
Good evening. My name is Charles Duff. I'm one of the two A specialists at Rogers Park Middle School. I was at the board meeting last year when Dr.